Okay, we'll go ahead and call the CRA meeting to order if you'd stand for the invocation and pledge to the flag. Lord Heavenly Father, as we gather here today to conduct business for the West Leesburg CRA and then the City of Leesburg, please give us the wisdom to do your work and make decisions tonight that are in the best interest of all of our citizens. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have minutes from December 18th. If I could get a motion to approve those?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Connor?
Yes.
Chairperson, rebuttal. Yes. We have one resolution.
It's a purchase.
Is that a purchase request? Did we get a motion introduced?
No, I can just read the note.
Okay.
It's a purchase request for approval of a purchase from Ernie Morris Enterprises, Inc., using the State of Florida contract for furniture and fixtures in the West Leesburg Neighborhood Resource Center for a total cost not exceeding $99,534.28.
Move for approval. Second.
Discussion.
My only concern is I thought the price was astronomical and I thought we should maybe go back and try to get some cheaper chairs. I think one of the office chairs, $350, $288 for one, another $351, then we bought like five or six of those. I just think it's kind of pricey. I think the stacking chairs shouldn't cost us $80 for a plastic stacking chair. So I just think it looks like to me we got a budget of $100,000 and we got close as we could so we could spend our money. But I think that we're probably about $30,000 more than what we should be.
I would agree. I just bought a bunch of office chairs from Staples and they were less than $100 a piece. They're nice.
Yeah, yeah. I've looked at Staples and the one here is 300 plus bucks. I think that there's probably two levels down we can use. So I just think maybe we need to look at maybe just because we got $100,000 budget, we don't have to spend $100,000. So that was just my concern.
The commission, other comments from the commission?
I agree. I think that that price was ridiculous, yeah. And one of the chairs was up around $500 and then you have to add in each of those things underneath it.
Yep.
That was too expensive.
And I hope we're not doing the other city projects the same way that we don't get a seat like this, that we're not just having the department here spend $351 on an office chair because I think that's just really, really too much.
So maybe we could table this.
I'll get back to purchasing.
Somebody like make a motion to table.
Move the table.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Discussion from the public on this or the prior motion?
I would just like to say thank you for Commissioner Christian. You and I agree on this.
Oh, my God.
Somebody mark this down. I did a spreadsheet for you guys. It's last minute, did it at lunch. It's not fancy. It's on PowerPoint. It's handwritten right on the map. You do have a nice corner office there and I don't know who's getting that corner office, but their chair is $463 and their desk is a frosted desk at $722.40. And I had put it on the map for you. So that corner office expense is more than the other corner office that has way more furniture in it. I didn't see as far as like the pricing of the, a lot of it seemed right on target, but this really stood out. You know, the $500 chair, the almost $800 desk. So thank you if you agree to table it and re-look at this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Chairperson, rebuttal.
Yes. That's it for the motions. Roll call.
Commissioner Christian?
I did speak with Toby Best and Homes and Partnership. They actually have two closings for the agreement that we did with them to build two houses starting, then we did Ms. Gibbs and I think another young lady, but they have probably about four houses the next three or four months. And CDC is also going to work with them so we can put some seed money to actually build another house so that people can start to see some housing and will speed up the move-in for some of the new homeowners so we can see some new homes being built in the Carver Heights area. So I am excited about that and I'm telling them hurry up so that I can share with the commission that our partnership is actually working. So they seem to be excited that the homeowners are actually being qualified for new housing in Carver Heights. That's all that happened.
Commissioner Hurley?
Not Mr.
Commissioner Johnson?
On the furniture, what about the quality in the, like what you have and what Ernie has? Is it about the same? Well, Ernie was a former student of mine years ago.
Well, I don't think it's-
But that's beside the point, but is there an essential difference between the quality of the, you know, of the furniture?
Well, I share the same AJON brand and basically there's like different layers, levels of quality. So you can get the high-end quality at $350, you can get a medium at $200, another $100. So I just don't think, as Ms. Backen said, I don't think you need to spend $500 on an office chair. Because I shop at the auctions when governmental people give their stuff away and I just, you know, look at the chops when I get these $300 chairs for $5 after people don't sit in them long. So I just don't think we need to start off with $100,000 with the furniture. That's just my personal, I don't think the quality will be that bad.
Okay, I'm the student, you the teacher this time.
Oh.
Commissioner Dennison?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Connor?
Well, I'd like to know what type of home that they're going to build out there. If you're going to be like happy to have or something better.
There'll be three two-block homes. There'll be concrete blocks, similar to one that's down from your house on that corner end, similar to that one.
Another thing, have they stopped sweeping the streets out there in that area?
You ever seen them sweeping, Mrs. Chee? They haven't been coming through? City manager is going to update, probably works.
Okay.
Chairperson, rebuttal.
Nothing tonight.
Motion to adjourn?
I mean, adjourns. All right, you can go ahead and call the meeting to order. We've already had our invocation and pledge early, CRA meeting and-
You might have to hit the-
Okay. Okay, we're going to get started here. We're going to move the agenda around a little bit because I have to leave early and there's some things that I know we might have potentially close votes on. So we're going to go ahead and jump right to 5F and then G, which a lot of people are here for G. So if we could get a, someone could introduce 5F.
I'll introduce and that's to be read by Tyler Longus.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida authorizing the use of construction manager at risk slash construction manager as general contractor project delivery method for construction of the Venetian Gardens Community Building Project and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
I don't know how much, how much discussion. Essentially, the staff is recommending that we move forward with the community center instead of a design bid, build method, a construction manager at risk method like we did with the resource center. The primary reason for that is we have found lately that our estimates have not been extremely close and B, the work quality that we're getting is a little bit down. I think that's a result of the market as being busier and then contractors' bids are reflecting those higher numbers and then it's harder for them to complete the work. So with discussion with procurement staff and with public work staff, we determined or at least recommending that the best way to keep the project on track is to go construction manager at risk and the best way to keep it within the budget confines is to go construction manager at risk. We have a construction manager at risk on retainer right now. However, statutes does not allow us to use our continuing service agreement with the existing contractor because the project is over $2 million. So we're requesting that we move forward with a, with a request for proposals, do a procurement process for the CM at risk and then move forward accordingly.
Do you have any idea how much additional funds that would cost?
We think you're still, we think what it's going to do is keep you within the budget so you don't go over budget. And we've been trying to shoot in that $6.5 million window. So this effort is trying to keep it in that budget perspective. Our concern is that if we go design bid, build, that that's going to blow the budget and then hurt the project even more. So we're trying to control the costs upfront.
Okay.
Other comments? Okay, any comments from the public? Roll call.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Christian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor rebuttal.
Yes. Someone could introduce 5G?
I'll introduce.
Actually, there's nothing to introduce, is there? Okay. This is to consider the disc golf course location. Al, do you want-
Yeah, this is another staff recommendation to you. We continue to move forward on design and we're getting ready to start some minor construction of the disc golf course out at the, at the landfill site. However, it's this issue, it's just, this has become quite a project. We initially thought we were going to be spending around 10 grand. When we settled on this location, the commission authorized about the 60 grand. And our issues with this continued to persist that we're getting into a little bit more costs on the entry road. We're also having some more costs with, after the storm because what we thought were some tree removal costs, we're going to, or tree trimming costs are now tree removal costs and some of the other design efforts. So before we get into this, staff wanted to make one last recommendation to the commission to reconsider this project and to partnership with Lake Sumter State College instead. That will reduce our cost from about $60,000 to $10,000. The county knows, we have flirted with this on and off. If you decide to go in this fashion, we will need to do a resolution to amend the county agreement and then ultimately we would need to do an agreement with the college. So our staff recommendation, we do think it's an important project and we also think there's some duplication there. So we're recommending to move forward with the college.
Well, for me, I mean, I was definitely been one of the big proponents for it. But I think, you know, since we talked last, I've done a lot of homework and there's a lot of factors that I think the commission ought to consider. Number one, it's, you know, when I originally was on board with that location, I was in hopes that we could find access off of 27 somewhere coming in from the south end of it. And that's not true. We're going to have to come in off of the 44 out west of town. It's really not wanted there. That's a rural, kind of county-country setting and the traffic on that two-lane road, I think there's been a lot of opposition there. Number two, you know, I still don't like the fact that with the fire department and our training facilities and everything else that's there, plus the dump being there, the old landfill and all the stuff out there. And I just kind of wonder, you know, I mean, down the road, there might be something else that that land could be used for that would be more useful or that would fit that landscape out there opposed to this, especially if we're going to have one. And I think another big deterrent for me is if you go out there, you don't really know you're even in Leesburg. A lot of people won't even associate it really with Leesburg. And so I think I just, as of tonight, I'm a no vote on it. And I can give more details, but I just think for a lot of reasons that we'd be better off to save money, move it, and who knows? I mean, if the frisbee, I mean, from the ones that I've looked up and, you know, they all start out with a boom, but they fizzle out. If it's something that takes off, you know, there's always property that we could probably find later down the road that might be more conducive to it and more welcoming. And I just think that we would be better off to save the money, partner with other places and try to find something that makes everybody happy.
My feeling, I'll start, I've got a few thoughts on it. First thought is, is that, you know, this is city property there that I think is a nice piece of property that we should look at doing something with. And so I don't know the full history of the neighborhood that I, you know, from a little bit that I've looked at particularly with the neighboring property here and a developer that came in and wanted to do something a number of years ago, and I read all those minutes from, from that particular meeting or discussion, the neighbors just don't want anything out there. And this is, we're talking about a, you know, like, you know, a small intrusive addition to the, to that part of the city to add a disc golf course in there. That's not going to be a high traffic level at all. And so if the neighborhood is up in arms about that use, they're going to be up in arms about anything we do out there at all. And so I don't think that's right. I think we, that's our property. I think it needs to be used for something. It's a night, a very nice piece of property too. As far as it having been a landfill, there are, our country's dotted with parks that were previously landfills. So that's not a concern for me and I think that's actually an appropriate ongoing use of that, of that piece of property. And again, this is very unintrusive to do that. If we ever do anything with that piece of property at all, we're going to have to make the extension to the roadway to be able to get to it. So one way or another, we're going to have to, going to have to do that. I'm not particularly married to a, a disc golf course for that use of that property, although I think it's an appropriate use for it and from the information that's been given by the county and this is part of a bigger picture of, of the county trying to attract these, this tournament. And I wasn't on the commission when you voted down the volleyball. And, you know, here we are, we've got now a, a disc golf that, you know, we can vote down and it, you know, we've got the Lake Sumter site and there's going to be other sites in the county, but we'll miss out on, on that. I think at some point in time, we got to start looking at, at alternative things that we can do in the city to, that are, that are things that people are enjoying now, whether it's volleyball, whether it's the disc golf. I've looked at this piece of property, thought well, maybe a BMX bicycle course out there, you know, something to attract those kinds of uses. Off topic, we've, I've brought up one time about doing the cricket in town because there's a lot of demand for people that are, that are looking for cricket courses and that didn't get any legs to it at all. But at some point in time, we got to start looking at other, at other things and, and I think define what we are. And we're going to have another discussion, I would imagine, one day about a swimming pool. And so that's, that's an old use that we're talking, you know, that they're still talking. I know in the community that there's still people that want to have that, but, but if we're going to, if we're going to present ourselves as a recreational active community that has a lot of different things that you can, that you can pursue here, whether it's, you know, disc golf or volleyball or swimming, or swimming in the swimming pool or whatever it might be, then we need to, we got to decide what we're going to be and are we going to be that or not? And if we're going to, if we're going to be talking down the road about being a swimming pool, I would hope that that's what we're tending our identity to be, to be a recreational outdoor city and that particularly when we start spending that kind of a money for a swimming pool that it, we need to get, and I know this isn't the topic tonight, but if, if we head that way, then when, if we spend that kind of money, we need to be spending it more than just for a swimming pool. We need to be spending it for an image of the city to justify that kind of an expense. And so here, and so if that's going to be our image, then here and there, we're going to need to spend $50,000, $75,000, $100,000 for something that would be consistent with a recreational outdoor image. So if I put all those things together, I look at this and say, this is a, a very non-intrusive recreational use of a piece of property for the city that doesn't give us a huge financial commitment. It's a little bit of a commitment. But if, if we're going to have an image of being a recreational outdoor city, this is a piece of property that's ideally suited for this, there's a plan in place for it and I just feel like we should go forward with it. If, if we're going to have that image, if we're not, we're going to shut the doors and tighten the purse strings and say we're not going to be recreational. We don't want to do bike paths, which that doesn't get any legs either. We don't want to paint bicycles on streets or anything like that to create bicycle lanes. So if we just don't want to spend money that way, then let's tighten the purse strings and say we're not recreational. If you don't, if you, if you don't, if you want to be recreational in your lifestyle, don't come to Leesburg. Go somewhere else. But if we want to be that, then I think we got to start making some decisions to, to head that way. And I think this would be one of them.
I'd just like to clarify, we're not talking about frisbee golf or no frisbee golf. We're talking about frisbee golf there or frisbee golf in, at the college. So we're talking about frisbee golf in Leesburg one way or another. I just want to be clear about that.
I understand that.
Okay, so we're not talking about this piece of-
But we're talking about this piece of property and what else. You know, I think this is, that, that location is, and they have put in, the presentations previously have been, and I don't know if it's changed, but the presentation's previously been that this is the premier location for the county in, in seeking to obtain the international tournament to, to come to Lake County.
Can, can I get Travis to respond? I don't see you. Travis and I had a discussion about that and, and I think while the county has some opinions about this being the premier location, I think it's a premier location from a core standpoint. I don't think it's a premier location from an attractor standpoint. And that's why I think the Lake Sumter College opportunity presents all the things that Commissioner Bone is talking about in reference of getting on the map of being a recreational community, getting on the map in terms of getting our, spreading our wings and attracting people to the community. Part of the partnership with the, the college will be to have our name on the course out there and that's in a prime location. So Travis, if you could just echo those sentiments because that's the discussion we had.
Yeah, Travis, I'm a director of recreation. What Alan, Alan and I had talked about was the benefits that, that the City of Leesburg will get are the attraction of the tournaments to the, the county trail, another amenity for people to play. And there's, there's the duplicate of services, having it out at the, the landfill and at the college. Do we need, do we need two disc golf courses in Leesburg? And with some of the, the issues that we, we continue to have out there, it just seems like, like it's, we get the benefit if we go with the $10,000 with the, the Lake Sumter or we get the benefit if we build it out at, out at the, the landfill. So to, to us, our staff recommendation hasn't changed since May when we recommended to, to partner with the, with the college. And I think, I think we get the, the benefit from having at the, at the college without having to, to go through the, the steps out at landfill.
Let me just emphasize again, I said, I'm not married to the, the idea of this. What I, what's giving me a bad taste is, is that it seems like it's a neighborhood thing again and, and, and that I think, at least me, if I'm going to say we're not going to do the disc golf here because it's duplicative and we can do it somewhere else, then I want it to be clear that I feel like we need, you, we should address using this piece of property as something else soon, sooner than later. And, and, and my feeling would be is that we're not going to be limited by the fact that it's going to create some additional traffic out there through the, through the neighborhood to be able to get to it. It's too nice and valuable a piece of property to just let it sit there and inversely condemned by our neighborhood. By boys, that's my boys. That's why I was late. I'm sorry for the last meeting.
Commissioner, send you some comments.
Yeah, I actually, thank you. I actually am in favor of this going out to the college. It's going to get a lot more use out there and also realize that financially it will cost us less money because the college will pick up responsibility for the yearly maintenance. The City of Leesburg would not have to put out money year after year after year. So if we can get an agreement with the college, if they will take care of the maintenance and whatnot, I'm in favor of going to the college.
And I want, I just want to, I mean, reiterate one thing. I, I agree with you. I mean, it's a piece of property, it's something's going to go there and whether the city found something that would be appropriate and were put there, the city sells the property to some rancher and he wants, whatever, something, it's a beautiful piece of property. I think that the crutch with them were, is when you, when, once you get on the piece of property, the layout, the trees, you know, that was great and would work. I think my issue, what I was saying is the neighborhood's part of it, but there again, that's just a part. I had several things after going out there in my truck and driving to it and then seeing the access and, and all that. I just thought another location, I mean, if it were me, if I had my golden wish, I would put it in the Venetian Gardens. I think playing the islands would be awesome with that. That's where I'd put it. So I mean, I want to be a recreation community and I don't have a problem supporting it. I, I just was thinking that something else down the road. And I think every time that something comes up, we bought that parking over there, Beverly Shores, and they want to put the boat dock. And the first thing we heard was the neighborhood didn't want to boat dock there because of traffic, boaters coming in and out. So I think that's going to be a growth issue anywhere. Like you said, it don't matter where we go, we're going to have to have, you know what I mean? I mean, that just comes with growth and traffic will definitely increase as we do more and more. But I think that it, it definitely enhances the quality of life here and the worse my swing gets, the more I'm kind of interested in frisbees. So, you know, but I just, I do, on this particular juncture right now, I just kind of think that the college is a better location and it's in the heart of Leesburg and I think we'll get good traction and recognition for having a Leesburg course. And hopefully that would get young people who are already at the college invited because they got the tennis courts and, you know, the running trail and all that stuff, the baseball field's there.
Well, I, and I'm okay with that. I would just like to see us, if we're not going to do this, that we look at something else to do with this piece of property.
I agree.
To get a, I think in that, that part of Leesburg, what you call that, the south, southwest corner there of that part of Leesburg, that we, that it, we provide some sort of recreational community, amenity there in that area. It doesn't, it doesn't have one. And I, I think this property is suited for that.
Commissioner Christian, comments?
I'm a Commissioner Bone. I'm not married to, to a piece of property at all. I do disagree that we have more advantage at Lake Sumter because I think it's going to be Lake Sumter. It's not going to be Leesburg. It's going to be Lake Sumter Community College. So I don't think we get exposure. I don't think we get a benefit because we're not going to take care of it and it's not going to have Leesburg name. They put a sign up, but it'll be Lake Sumter Community College and it's going to name it their disc golf. Like I said, we won't say now, but I disagree with us having advantage out of $50,000. I don't think, over a course of time, I don't think it's going to benefit us by being at Lake Sumter other than we didn't have to spend $50,000. So I do disagree with, with the advantage of being at Lake Sumter because I don't think we're going to get exposure out. We don't get exposure now, I just didn't leave bird, but we don't get exposure to partial of Lake Sumter. Never have, I don't think we will.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, I'm, I wasn't in favor of this location and still, and not, mostly for me it's the cost issue of getting it there when we can do it at Lake Sumter and save the money. I also have serious doubts about the long-term viability of disc golf, so sinking the money for that concerns me. Recreation, you know, I'm there and I think we could test it though if it works at Lake Sumter and there's some huge demand and we need more disc golf courses in a couple of years, then I'll be wrong and I'll be happy to be wrong and we'll go find a second course. So that's great. And then in terms of other uses, I did get, well, I, I met with the sellers and then they sent a, a letter to all the commissioners, but not until 2 o'clock this afternoon, so probably not had time to look at it. But they're, they're working with a nonprofit that would provide equine therapy for both autistic children and then for, for people, veterans dealing with PTSD. And they own some adjacent property there and think there may, they're still in the early stages, but they think there may be some opportunity to partner somehow with the city and, and do something there. So, you know, I, I don't, they don't have a, a defined proposal exactly yet, but I think we should, you know, explore that option and see what it looks like and maybe we can come back at a different time and talk about that. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up to comments with the public. If you could, you know, keep them to this issue specifically, try to keep them to three minutes. And then also, I have to leave in 10 minutes and you have three votes against it. So if you're voting against it, you might want to, we should finish up before I have to leave in terms of not putting it out there. So go ahead and if you could state your name.
Hi, my name is Ben Champion. I'm the director of the Florida Disc Golf Foundation. We're the not-for-profit entity that the City of Leesburg has a three-party agreement with related to this course and also all of the other courses in the Lake County Disc Golf Trail. The, you know, it's your property and obviously you're, you know, decide what to do with it. My job is to speak to the Lake County Disc Golf Trail and my expertise related to disc golf. Regarding the merits of the, of the properties, the landfill location is far superior for far superior for a disc golf course than the Lake Sumter property. There's a lot more land, there's elevation change, there's less trees. There will be a lot of trees in the way at the Lake Sumter course and we don't like to cut down lots of trees. So it'll lend itself to being a shorter, very technical course, whereas the landfill property will be more open and, you know, a better course overall, more property and a better canvas to paint on, if you will. In addition, the Lake Sumter College course is not a done deal yet. There is no signed agreement. You know, the parties have agreed in general, but there is technical legal wording to be worked out based on what the Board of Trustees at Lake Sumter has requested. Part of the contract with Lake Sumter course is that Lake Sumter has, is working with DiscGolfCenter.com, which is a large disc golf reseller. And the course at Lake Sumter is going to be titled, "The DiscGolfCenter.com Course at Lake Sumter State College." So where Leesburg fits in to that, it gets, you know, as Mr. Christian, Pastor Christian stated, it starts to get diluted. Leesburg's valuable contribution would be diluted though. In addition, to hold these large disc golf tournaments and to the international tournaments that Commissioner Bone spoke of, we need a certain number of courses. And, you know, reducing the Disc Golf Trail by this course will damage the entire brand of the Disc Golf Trail and what the county is trying to do. The county is prepared to write a $40,000 check, $20,000 to Lake Sumter and $20,000 to the city of Leesburg to build these two courses, which are vitally needed for the whole project here to bring tourism and provide recreational amenities to the citizens of Lake County. And I strongly urge you to vote yes to approve this course as designed. And if any of you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. More comments?
Hi, I'll try to make this quick. Thank you for hearing us. My name is Greg Hosfeld. I am a three-time Professional Disc Golf Association World Champion and Hall of Famer and one of only nine master designers in on the planet, basically. And I am designing all of the courses on the Lake County Disc Golf Trail. The primary objective of the Lake County Disc Golf Trail is to draw players from not only Florida, but around the country and in fact, the world. And the disparity between the Lake County, or excuse me, the Lake Sumter property and the hill, as we call it in El Rancho, is huge. I have completed the design on the course over here on the landfill. And quite frankly, I think it's going to be one of the top courses in Florida. I can say that hole six as designed will probably be one of the most talked about holes in the entire state. And if you're looking to for the entire Lake County Disc Golf Trail project to do what it is intended to do, this is the type of amenity that we really need to take a hard look at. We've looked at Venetian Gardens. It's a beautiful place and I've designed a course there, but I think that recreationally speaking, people are going to be throwing discs in the water all day. They don't float and it'll be very discouraging for new players. We'll have that option on the hill. And I think that the Lake Sumter State College course will be a great entry level course, but the one at El Rancho will actually accommodate professional level players. And I do believe that it will draw players, not only for tournaments, but for casual play. And quite frankly, I think it could put you guys on the map as far as disc golf in general goes. I will say that there is a town in Missouri that has started building courses so that they could host events like this. And they have billboards on the side of the highway showing people playing, you know, come play around here in town. So in speaking to Mr. Hurley, Commissioner Hurley, you were talking about looking into courses and you seem, they seem to have been fizzling out. I just want to say that the Professional Disc Golf Association sanctions events and they sanctioned over 3,000 events in 2016. And it's not slowing down in the least. It's actually blowing up. It's one of the very fastest growing sports in the entire world.
So what was the total area of those 3,000?
The total area? They sanctioned most of them, I would say probably 80, 85% of the events that were sanctioned were in the United States. And then there's also PDGA Europe. Finland alone has 500 courses now. So it's not going to go away. It's not going to slow down. It's only going to blow up. And, you know, I think that this is a great way to get your foot in the door and you will see sports tourism with this project if we are able to complete it as designed and as intended.
So in 2016, in all of the United States, 300 million people, you had 2,600 sanctioned events and that's an overwhelming amount of events?
It's growing. I mean, the sport itself has grown.
I heard yourself keep arguing because the point was I was trying to make is I understand it, but I wasn't talking about sanctioned events. I was talking about people. But you kind of, now you're making me even less enthused about it. 2,600 in all of the United States.
That's sanctioned competitive events. There's leagues and like smaller leagues every week in many, many towns, thousands of towns. So casual play and tournament play are very different.
And I was referring to casual play.
Yeah, casual play, we've literally, we have millions of people playing every day. You know, I mean, it's something that a little kid can do right next to their parents or grandparents, a beginner can do right next to a world champion. It doesn't matter. You know, it's basically gets people outdoors. There are childhood obesity programs that employ disc golf for that end. And the educational disc golf experience is a program sanctioned or run by one of the major manufacturers. So it's far larger than I think you've managed to delve into, I think, if you looked a little further.
That's why I'm trying to give you some support at the college.
Yeah, and we appreciate it. I think the college itself will be a great entry level, but it will not draw players. We just, it just doesn't have the features.
And if it turns out to be that it draws, then I'll be definitely more supportive to find another location.
Okay, well, I will say that, you know, that this particular location over here will actually draw players. People will come because of the layout that is there. I don't want to make myself sound important in that, you know, I designed the course, but that's why I was brought in, is I held the record for the most amount of courses played for about 15 years. I gained a lot of experience and seeing the very best and the very worst that the game has to offer. And of course, out at El Rancho is, I think it's going to be really terrific if we're allowed to finish it. But.
Okay, we need to move on to more people. We understand, but thank you.
The last thing I'll say is that most of the money being spent is for infrastructure rather than the course. So if you do anything out there at any time, you're going to spend three quarters of that just to get people there. And that with that.
Understood. Thank you. Any more comments from the public? Okay, more comments from the commission. I hope we have one more.
My name's Linda Sellers. Mr. Bone, most I wanted to speak about what you were saying. Can y'all hear me? I can't even hear myself. Okay, for our neighborhood, our neighborhood is a rural neighborhood in the county. What y'all want to do is for the city, you have your own entrance for the city. And we're not trying to stop you from using your property, but you do have your own entrance and that's what we would like you to do. So whatever you ever do with that, if you use your own entrance, then you don't even have to worry about us. Right now, you've got a nice big fence up there and we just don't want public access through our roads, down our roads and away from our roads that we can't see. It's down there. We have drug problems over here. We have drug problems on the other side. We have drug problems at our entrance and we just don't want another haven for it. So we do have good reasons for not wanting this. It's not we just don't want it because we don't mind you having a golf course. We just don't want the secluded park in our neighborhood that nobody in our neighborhood can see and nobody in the Lucas Street neighborhood can see either. And we don't have city police protection. So we don't, who do we call? Anyway, are y'all going to send patrols down to watch it? I don't know. But we already have our problems and we don't want more. The second thing is we have road problems already with just us that live there. We don't want any more. But, you know, you're saying, oh, just a few cars. Okay, fine, just a few cars. But what they really want is tournaments. That's not just a few cars. That's a lot of cars. Maybe not every day, but it's a lot of cars when they're there. You've got pedestrians that come right across there at that intersection of there. Not just us, but many people in our neighborhood have almost hit pedestrians on bicycles mostly. And we, since my last meeting that we were here, I've almost been in three accidents right there, just not with pedestrians, but just being clipped almost. And we have reasons that we don't want y'all to use our roads. You have your own access. So just what we're saying is use your own access for whatever you choose to do there. And I'm speaking for a lot of people that aren't even, haven't got here yet. So just to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. More comments from the commission.
So the other access road, we want to, we not ever use that up?
Yeah, the other, we've had that. That's another reason that we're back here before you is we've looked at the other access road. That's the Neely Road access. And to do that, we've got to come right down pretty much the east end of the landfill. And then we've got a significant fencing issue so people don't drift into the unsecured area and meander around the property that's not ready for develop. Then it mixes with the fire station thing. So I mean, there's some, there's some access issues to this property. We knew that going in.
I'm going to vote to support it. That's going to fail, I'm sure, but I'm going to vote to support it because I would like to see Leesburg identified more for recreation. I think we have, you know, some big pieces there already with the parks and the ballfields that we have. And I do anticipate that we're going to have more requests for some big, a big ticket item for recreation. And if we're going to go that way, I think we need to, I think we need to really look at every opportunity we have to increase our recreation in the city and look at new ideas and use this piece of property. This is a minimal investment to begin initiation of use of that property. So I'm going to support it. I think it's a reasonable attempt to go in that direction that I think we should go.
Roll call.
Commissioner Christian?
We don't have a, Ed?
Yeah, there's really no motion.
Okay, so, okay, that's right.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we authorize the staff to create an agreement with Lake Sumter State College and deal with the county folks and pursue an agreement with Lake Sumter County College and move from there. I do not, well, that's my motion, to go with Lake Sumter State College and to deal with the county.
And drop this one.
Drop this one.
Right. So your, so your motion then is inverse. If you want to stop, you vote yes. If you don't want to stop, you vote no. You got that.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Christian?
No.
Commissioner Hurley?
Wait a minute.
Yes, if you want to go to Lake Sumter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Got me confused.
Commissioner Bone?
No.
Mayor Robert?
Yes. Okay, so Commissioner Christian, if you could come take over. I have to. It's a version of the public that the golf, disc golf is not going to go out at the landfill for now, just so you know.
For now.
You can use it.
All right. So thank you everyone for coming. Okay, so item three is the presentation, presentation by Kids Central Incorporated offering services and programs at the Leesburg Resource Center.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us and giving us the opportunity to provide you with some more information about the West Leesburg Family Resource Center and our involvement in it. So my name is Deborah Wise-Belez. I'm the Deputy Chief of Programs at Kids Central. Kids Central is the agency that treats children who have been abused and neglected in the foster care system up for adoption, placed with relatives, non-relatives in a five-county area. So we cover Marion, Citrus, Lake Sumter and Hernando County. Another piece of what we do is dealing with kids before they even are abused or neglected and trying to create programming that assists kids from not getting that call to the child abuse hotline. I brought with me our Director of Prevention Services at Kids Central, Michelle Mongaluso. And what we want to talk to you today is about problems that are in the Leesburg area that we see in the child welfare system. And she's going to talk a little bit about the services we're hoping to offer in the Resource Center when it is completed. So right now, in the foster care system, under the court supervision, children have been taken from their parents in the particular zip code of where this is, the Resource Center is located. We have 47 children right now under our supervision from that zip code that are either in foster care with a relative, non-relative, in a group home setting or some placement outside of their biological parents. That's a lot of, that's a lot of kids. That's way too many kids from that zip code. So when we look at all of the child abuse cases that are called into the child abuse hotline, Lake County accounts for the five counties that I just discussed, they account for 26% of those calls to the child abuse hotline. Can you imagine how many percent of that 26% comes from Leesburg in that particular zip code? It's almost 16%. That's a lot for that particular zip code. So one of the things that we have been successful at in other counties that we serve is creating a neighborhood center, a community resource center, where it's like a one-stop shop for families to be able to come so that we can provide them with the services that they need so that they don't enter the child welfare system. So I'm going to let Michelle kind of talk about some of the programs and services that hopefully we'll be able to offer in the Resource Center. And this is a draft of the, that we provided you guys, of the services that we hope to be able to provide in the neighborhood project. So currently we have two other family resource centers, ones in Wildwood and ones in Ocala. And based out of those two centers, we provide assistance with Access Florida benefits. For anyone who's ever tried and attempted to apply for those, they become very, very challenging. It's not simple. It is all web-based, so you have to have a computer or internet access. So if you do not have a computer internet access, you're unable to apply for them unless you actually go to a storefront and the storefronts are not always available for individuals in certain communities. So we assist with Access Florida benefits. Many people don't realize when people apply for food stamps, they have to fax in shot records on children. But if you don't have access to a fax machine or a scanner, that makes that kind of challenging. So we're able to assist them with that by making faxes and sending copies. We assist with applying for jobs online. Many jobs are now online. If you go and look, you walk into Walmart, it's a computer. You walk into Publix, it's a computer. Very few places are using paper applications anymore. Again, if you do not have a home computer or a home internet service, that makes it virtually impossible to apply for a job. So we assist with that. We assist with resume writing. There's some individuals who've never, even ever done a resume. So we're able to sit down and assist with resume writing. We actually sit down and problem solve. If someone comes to us and they actually are having an issue of why they can't pay their, why they can't pay their utilities, why is that? Let's sit down with them and do some case management. Is it because they don't have a job? How do we get them a job? Is it because they need to get their high school diploma? How do we get them hooked up with the GED program? I actually have a meeting tomorrow with Lake Sumter to let them know that we are going to be partnering with the city of Leesburg and that to form that partnership with them for GED assistance so that when we do run across those individuals who need help with the GED, we're able to help assist them. We also have Early Learning Coalition. We're an Early Learning Coalition site so people can come in and apply for childcare because if you have a job and you have children, you need childcare. What it is, is basically bringing the services into the community that needs it. I use the analogy of Publix. So everybody has their favorite grocery store and I think Publix has taken over in Florida. So everybody has their favorite grocery store that they go to, whether it's Walmart or Publix, and you know exactly where everything is at within that store. The moment you walk into a Publix in a different neighborhood, you go out of town, you walk into someone else's Publix, it's all different. And things are, and you get really frustrated walking around going, why is the bread over here? And why is the water? You do. So imagine living in your own neighborhood and you're in a crisis mode. And then when you tell somebody you need assistance, they tell you, you have to leave that comfort of your own community and you now have to travel five miles, 10 miles, seven miles, whatever it is, to another community to sit down and talk to someone. We try to alleviate that. We're bringing the services into that community to have someone there so that when they do have a crisis situation, they're able to walk maybe a block, two blocks, a half a mile. two blocks, a half a mile, a mile, to get there, so they're able to sit down and actually be able to get some resolution, instead of getting further stressed out about what's going on in their life. So, that's what we do at the Neighborhood Projects, and that is what our plan is here in Leesburg. And currently, we serve, in our West Ocala project, we serve over four, five hundred people a month come in and out of there, and they have begun to rely on that. That's our oldest one. And we serve a little over a hundred in our Wildwood, which has only been around for a couple of years. So, having the bus line and everything and the way that it's situated, we anticipate having the four, five hundred at minimum people coming in and out of the Resource Center that we're able to assist, so that they're not getting called to the, you know, child abuse hotline. Hopefully, we can alleviate some of those and mitigate some of those things that cause people to get stressed and abuse and neglect their children. We do have a short video just for, just to kinda show what our Family Resource Center is, it puts it in a short way, better than we can articulate in words.
Safety and health in areas where there are high volumes of calls. Kids Central Neighborhood Projects are a network of Neighborhood Lees Resource Centers. They were created to engage families in services that promote family well-being, safety, and health. In areas where there are high volumes of calls to the hotline, the centers connect residents and resources from the community to strengthen families and build strong neighborhoods. The purpose of the Family Resource Center is mainly to prevent child abuse.
We're able to identify areas that have higher-than-normal areas of abuse or high volumes. Really go in there to give robust purposes to prevent those. The people that come to the center, they come here with a specific need.
There are a lot of things that are offered here in, in the center, a lot of resources that are available here. We invite you to come to a resource center, let us work with you.
So, we've already selected the person that will be from Kids Central, that will be, and we've had Ken help us with the interview process and selection of the candidate, who will be assigned to the Leesburg Center once it opens. Anything else? We already have a bunch of community partners that are excited to work with us at the center, so if anybody has any questions for us, go ahead.
Does the state provide you with funding for this program?
The state provides us with the funding for the position for the pro-
For the person who's going to run?
Correct.
Okay, now, in Wildwood or Ocala, do you pay rent in that building?
In Ocala, the city of Ocala provides, we pay a dollar a month, or a dollar a year for that particular. And then, the one in the Wildwood area, that's a partnership with a church, and they pay for everything. We pay for the position.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes. So, other than the one paid staff employee, are there other, how's it gonna be staff?
We rely heavily on volunteers. So, we will recruit volunteers that will be Level Two background screen, we do not allow anybody in, that's working with families or children in any capacity to work with the families unless they've been cleared with a Level Two background screen, if they commit to volunteering over ten hours.
Can I ask if, are, do you, in particularly in your Wildwood location there, do you get many volunteers from the villages?
Absolutely. That is a majority of it, especially from the church that we partner with, that's where we get a lot of our volunteers from.
We happen to have on our agenda tonight, talking about some housing in Leesburg from there, so hopefully that-
And we also have a supervisor over the Neighborhood Project, so there's a supervisor who then supervises those staff members.
So, you mentioned you've got some partnerships established already for here, can you just kind of maybe run through a quick list of who those are?
Well, Access Florida, the Early Learning Coalition, hopefully Lake Sumter Community College, Goodwill, Langley Medical Center, they have a mobile medical bus that they provide us with in our other two locations, and they're willing to come here as well, which will be able to provide families in the area some, like, once a month, a bus will be there, and they're adding dental services to it, as well as medical. It's ELC, I said the Early Learning Coalition.
They're already on, all on board?
All on board. And we've been working with the Leesburg area schools. I personally have been doing some classes with Leesburg Elementary and a grant that they had to kind of get the community engaged in their particular school, 'cause they're seeing it with the referrals and the discipline and the attendance and all kinds of different things in their school system. So, they have reached out to us, so we have lots of partnerships in the school system as well. And I know Lions, they do Lions eyesight, they actually come out once a month, each one of our locations do test on their first eyesight, so they will be partnering with us on that as well.
And the services that you'll be providing there, is it, how duplicative, if at all, are they from anything that's being provided in Leesburg right now? And how, and what proximity would those be?
I oversee the Healthy Start programming that's in Leesburg, our office is off of Lee Street, and at this point in time, for the families that we serve, I, I don't know that we're duplicating anything, we're just giving it those services right in the community and the partners that we're working with. I mean, they're thankful that they're gonna have a site right in the neighborhood that needs it the most.
Well, I'm excited about this, I think, I don't know if people realize, I think, just how important for me that, and I know that this is for Leesburg and for the kids and the families, and, and so, you know, such a need that we have, that we, it's not just Leesburg, it's everywhere, but Leesburg, you know, we're, we've stepped forward to, to address that need, I think, here, and, and the things that we're doing and, and the services that you're gonna provide, and I know that people, that this will help change the lives of people that participate in it.
Right, and we also will be offering classes too, as needed, as it comes along. We've done it in our other locations, where just general computer classes, I mean, just basic 101. And I'm talking basic 101, we had a, you know, a thirty-year-old individual who was all excited, 'cause they learned how to change the font. There are individuals out there who don't have a clue how to operate a computer, I mean, our kids nowadays, you know, they're coming home in first and second grade, and they're zipping through things, as opposed to, there's, there's adults out there, there's thirty, forty-year-olds that have no clue how to operate a computer. They're coming in, they're illiterate, they don't even know how to read, so having them sit down and apply for Access Florida is very difficult and challenging for them, and we're eliminating some of that barrier, because they're being able to do it in their own neighborhood. So, they don't feel like someone's gonna look down on them, they're gonna be able to sit down with someone who understands where they're coming from, and to be able to help and to assist them with that. So, different classes of however it is that we might be able to help, even in Wildwood, there's a discussion about doing cooking with a crock pot, getting crock pots donated, so that families can come in and learn how to cook meals in a crock pot, and then they leave with a crock pot, but helping that sustainability, trying to create that change within the community. And we also have access to, we have a resource center at our office in Wildwood area, and we have household items that are donated to us, clothing, non-perishable food items that we'll be able to offer to anybody that's in need that comes to us as well. So, we get that through donations and different partnerships that we have.
Commissioner Hurley, got anything?
I'm gonna go before the public, I see your hand, Ms. Van Dijk.
Sure.
Hi, I'm an Early Learning Coalition Board Member.
Awesome.
As far as duplicated services, we have duplicated services within the community. The Early Learning Coalition provides an office for parents and children to come in, where they can be screened on their computers, and they have an area where they can play. It's been an established office for quite some time, it's right here in the community, it's probably two miles from Carver Heights. We also have Workforce Central, which provides help with resumes and job finding, they also find ways to get grant money to go out to Lake Sumter or some of these other tech colleges. I would say maybe four miles from Carver Heights. So, it's not that I'm downgrading what Kids Central does, I was just trying to make a point that we have this resource center and we are duplicating services.
I've spoken with Alicia Winkler, the Executive Director, over the Early Learning Coalition, and she wanted to partner with us, so any services that we're, you guys are providing, we're not gonna duplicate, she would be the one to come in, or somebody from her staff to do the same thing right in the neighborhood, so.
And then we also have the Children's Advocacy Center that deals with children who are abused right here in town.
Right.
And I really wish our city would have supported that more. I just, and there's a lot of great not-for-profits out there, I just think we're kinda picking and choosing, and, and to speak to some of the services that you guys do, are you not subcontracting that out to live-stream some of those services?
We contract out the dependency case management, so they oversee the cases that I just talked about, the forty-seven children, they're responsible for the oversight and management of that. As far as a Child Advocacy Center goes, they are the ones that do, when a, when a child is abused or neglected and a call comes to a child abuse hotline, they'll bring the child to the Child Advocacy Center, and they provide some services, we coordinate some services with them as well, that's what I mean. But this position here is not subcontracted out, and I, I agree with what she's saying, but when you're talking to someone in the Carver Heights area who doesn't have any vehicle four miles away? That's a thousand miles away to someone else. If you don't have the means to get there, again, if I can walk a half a block, six blocks to get to where I need to get to, you're more likely to do that, as opposed to something that's four miles away. And again, I'm not taking away what the ELC does, it's a great privilege. We're just trying to bring that into the actual neighborhood where the individuals are living.
And I think, I'm with Commissioner Bone, you know, I'm, I'm excited. Hopefully, with your partnership, you reach out to some other groups, like Lake Community Action Agency, who provides homeless services, also Lake Tech may be able to help more with the GED than Lake Sumter, so Lake Tech may be also a very good partner for us with the GED programs. I think at Ken's, I would be working with them on some other things, culinary arts and maybe constructing, so it may be a great partnership for you guys to kinda entertain.
And we work with the Career, the Workforce Boards as well. Right, and we're working, and Lake Sumter also working with them for interns, for interns and volunteers, 'cause students will have to do volunteer hours, and most of them have internships, so it's a great opportunity for someone who's wanting to go into social services. This gives you the, we, everybody that walks through the door, that's a social services individual, so it gives them the great opportunity to figure out if that's really truly what they want to do. So, we do offer internships also.
All right. Any other comments from the commission?
I think, if I can just address Ms. Van Dijk in just a second here, I mean, I, I think that's been a concern, the duplication of services, and why do we need to have one out there in the Carver Heights, the West Leesburg neighborhood, when there's one, you know, at the Save-A-Lot Plaza, or wherever they might, wherever these other places might be. And those were discussions that we, that we did have, and, and the decision that we made and the consensus was, is that this would be a benefit to the, to Leesburg to have a resource center in the neighborhood itself, to be able to provide those, and it sounds like they're partnering very well with, with those groups.
And if there's somebody in that area, we'll bring them there, we'll ask them to come, like, we've done that in Wildwood, where we've asked them to come a couple days a week and sit in our resource center and provide that service, we're not, we're not the end-all deal.
But this is why we built the building, and if we don't do it, then we're, we gotta figure out something else to do with that building now, but this, this is why we did it, and it sounds like that's-
And I know you're gonna be flexible, so if it's not working, you're gonna come back and try something else, 'cause, you know, no matter what, people are gonna be there, and some people may not qualify for ELC services, some people may not qualify, they might not ever get to the Children Advocacy Center, maybe they walk in your, your center and you say, you know, hey, we need to call 911, because this child's been abused, so, and the community with so many issues, the city with so many issues, I was talking to school board member today, and the school has so many issues, so I think this is just another piece of the puzzle. When we talk about Leesburg, quality of life, we talk about everybody, not just the elite, not just the people that can afford it, but those that usually get left out of the equation, we're talking about rebuilding our city, so I think this is gonna be a very key piece to hopefully grabbing people that have kinda been left behind a few years back, as you talk to the thirty-year-old who can't change the font. So, hopefully, we'll get some more of those, those success, those people are making their life better through the work that we're doing here.
Commissioner, or-
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Mayor, if I can just, just add too, is that we, obviously, we have some issues in, in Leesburg, and they're, they're public, they're reported on, maybe more often than other places they're reported on, and, and, but those are, the issues that we have here, they're everywhere, I believe. It doesn't matter where you go, but for some reason, they, they get emphasized when they happen in Leesburg. And I think fortunately, Leesburg's in a position different than some other communities, that we can really do something about it. And so, we are doing things about, about those nationwide societal concerns that are happening, that are also happening here in Leesburg, and we're, and this is a big step, you know, towards that and other things that we're doing to address those. And I think we can be proud that when somebody, you know, makes, brings up those negative things that are, that are happening in Leesburg, that happen in other places as well, that we can say, we're doing something about it, and, and, and I'm, and I'm glad that we're, we're making this, this move to do it, and I hope, hope that works and that we'll be, have a lot of follow-up on it.
Because collaboration is key.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your, the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item four is our consent agenda. Routine items are placed on the consent agenda to expedite the meeting. If the commissioner's staff wish to discuss any item, the procedure is as follows. Pull the item from the consent agenda, vote on remaining items, one roll call vote, discuss each item pulled, and vote by roll call. Then items need to be pulled on tonight?
Four C two.
Any other items?
None for me.
None for me.
Now, we entertain a motion?
Motion to approve all other items besides four C two?
Second.
Moving properly second. Roll call, please.
Sorry. Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Christian?
Yes. Item four C two, the resolution, would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce, actually read by Tom Long.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Leesburg, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget for the General Carver Heights CRA, capital projects and recreational impact fee funds for the first quarter and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Move to approve.
Okay, and a second?
Right.
Okay, discussion? Commissioner Dennison, you pull this?
Yeah, I see underneath Carver Heights CRA, $200,000, and the funding source is intergovernmental revenue. Is that additional funds that are being put into Carver Heights, and where is that money coming from?
That's CDBG funds-
Mm-hmm.
-from HUD, the grant that you approved or authorized to get from the county for the kitchen build-out.
Okay.
That's what that is.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussions? The public? Roll call, please. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just trying to figure out, and maybe you can clarify this for me, but on the Carver Heights, you know, I see where people, where you're having different stuff being transferred, and it comes from a funding source, like fund balance, or, and that's where I would think that the Carver Heights would come from, a fund balance, because when you have a CRA, correct me if I'm wrong, within the district that the CRA is, is formed, you have those businesses that you pull tax, a certain percentage tax dollars off of when they, when they have their business tax, and then that gets siphoned into the CRA fund, which is kind of like their slush fund, but it comes with rules attached that says, you can only spend it on this or that, correct? So, so what I'm confused is, when we did the Resource Center, wouldn't we be tapping into the Carver Heights CRA, which is what I thought we were doing? I knew that we were gonna go over and that we would have to subsidize some of the money from the general fund to help make up for the fact of how much money we withdrew out of the Carver Heights fund, but looking at the sheet, and of course, I don't have your background, so I don't know, it just appears that we're paying for the Resource Center out of the general fund.
Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, this was Commissioner Dennison's question.
She's on the rollovers, she's not on the first quarter, she's gone back to the rollovers.
Which one is she on?
She's on the rollovers. Tracy, can you go back to the rollovers? It should be the one above it. In the rollovers, we're rolling 1.5 million for the Resource Center, it'll be like the second page.
She's gone to four C one.
Yeah.
That, that's a different item.
It's a different item.
Well, can you go and explain it, why you're there since it came up?
Okay, so when we established the Resource Center budget, there was debt proceeds around a million, we had some from the general fund, there is no money from Carver coming in, the only money that comes into Carver would be like property taxes ad valorem, but there's not a lot of excess each year. I think this year, we have like sixty thousand going into reserve, so there's not a lot of extra, even with the property taxes that remain and would build up in the cash. So, when they establish the budget, we're gonna go for a loan, probably internal, I would assume, and then there is some general fund money that we're using. I don't know if that answers the question, but.
Can I answer your question?
Well, so that means we are paying for the resource center out of the general fund budget.
There is a portion, a portion.
Yeah, and that number was disclosed.
Yeah, it's not.
It's like 60 green.
Like 60,000. And basically, we got.
Why don't you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Randy, if you will, why don't you walk down the point?
Yep.
In the, in the overlay.
Yep, okay.
Where each fund is coming from.
Can you go back up to, I'm on the resolution now?
Roughly, the, roughly the composite was.
Okay.
About a million dollars in a loan, 750,000.
We have one, one million.
In CDBG funds, that's different from the CDBG funds that's on the chart this evening. Those are entitled monies pooled.
Okay, it's right here. All right, so we got transfer.
From the county originally.
Transfer from the general fund, and that was actually money, Al, if you remember, that was left over from Magnolia Townhomes.
Yep.
That was sitting in the general fund.
That was HUD, that was.
So we were bringing that from the general fund over, because that was truly from the Magnolia.
Right.
You know, that whole situation.
Christian Corp, right?
Yes, so we were bringing that over there. Then we're gonna go, I would assume internally to get some sort of loan, that's the estimated number, 1,051,000. And then the 15 is something else.
The 15 and the 228, I think, are the general.
Yeah, the 228, I think, has to do with, yeah, the 228 is leftover 2009 note, or 2000, whatever that note was.
That was the loan.
That was in, yeah.
Yeah, that we did the.
It was in Carver.
Right.
So we're using that, Al shifted all that money over, so that's where the funding is coming from. So truly, the general fund money is tagged as, it's not general fund cash, it was in a separate account, leftover from Christian Corp.
And I guess when I was just looking at the sheets, the way it, looking at all the sheets, it looks like, and then we add more money into it, it looks like Carver Heights CRA is sitting with, you know, a million plus as a balance. That doesn't mean they have a million plus to spend. Am I correct in saying?
Well, a lot of it, also, when the, the CDBG block, that goes like in, like the 750,000.
We've, we've already spent a lot of that last year, so we didn't roll it over, so.
I think the answer to your question is yes. Like in that 1.6 million dollars, a million of that is, is note proceeds.
We're gonna have to go get.
That haven't even been, hasn't done yet.
So it hasn't been paid out yet.
It, it hasn't been borrowed yet.
Right.
That's the estimate amount of what we're gonna borrow, so we're gonna borrow that at the end.
And Carver will make those payments out of their.
CRA.
Ad valorem proceeds, yes. Does that answer it?
And I think that's the important part, you get a two-point-something-million-dollar building, and almost half of it comes from grant proceeds. So the community is borrowing a million dollars and paying it off with the property tax, not just from businesses, but also from homeowners of that particular geographical area. So you get a $2 million building in the city of Leesburg, and the Carver Heights community is only paying half of that money because most of it comes from grant money or leftover proceeds. So it's not necessarily the general fund, just from proceeds from the Carver Heights loans that from the last three or four years passed. So I think out of most buildings in Leesburg, I, I would hope, wish we can get half of it paid from grant money, most of it's coming from general fund or coming from utility. So I think this is something that we should be proud of from the Carver Heights, get a $2 million building, provide services, and half is paid for by grant money.
The grant money is taxed off.
Maybe tax, it can go, it can go to use as a clear model to various, thank God it's coming to Leesburg. Because we're gonna pay it whether, no matter where it goes, but I'm glad it's coming to Leesburg. Any other questions from the public? Now, roll call?
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Christian?
Yes. Well, so our public hearings, item five A is the second reading.
I'll introduce, it has to be read by Tom Long.
Thank you, sir.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, providing a short title, providing findings and intent, granting a non-exclusive water use franchise to South Sumter Utility Company, LLC, their successors and assigns, providing for a franchise for a period of 30 years to construct, own, operate, and maintain a potable water service and facilities to provide potable water to areas within and adjacent to the villages' age-restricted development, setting forth the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for conflict and separability, providing an effective date.
Move for approval?
Second.
Properly moved and second, discussion from the commission? From the public? If not, roll call please.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Christian?
Yes. Item five B is the first reading, would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce, it has to be read by Tom Long.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, amending chapter 25, City of Leesburg Code of Ordnances, to establish provisions supporting the ARD, Age-Restricted Development Zoning District, amending section 25-73 to provide for petition by property owners, amending section 25-269, parentheses, one, active districts to age-restricted development as an active zoning district, amending section 25-274, parentheses, C, planned development district intent statements to add an ARD, Age-Restricted Development, intent statement, adding section 25-287, an age-restricted development process to allow for a development review process, amending section 25-280, district development standards to add lot development standards and providing an effective date.
This is first reading, anyone got anything they want to discuss?
Not me.
Okay, this item will lay over to our, our next meeting. Item five C.
I'll introduce, it has to be read by Tom Long.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, rezoning approximately 2,631-plus-minus acres from city PUD, Planned Unit Development, to ARD, Age-Restricted Development, to allow for a mixed-use community for a property generally located near the Florida Turnpike and north and south of County Road 470, as legally described in sections 6, 7, 8, 9, 16, 17, 20, and 21, Township 20 South, Range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Sounds like a first reading, and I think, thank you for discussing tonight.
Nope, I think it's just another step in the right direction.
Item will lay over as well to our next meeting, item five D.
I'll introduce, it has to be read by Tom Long.
Thank you, sir.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement between the city of Leesburg and the villages' land company, LLC, for the purpose of adopting a development agreement under chapter 163.3220-163-3243, Florida statutes, providing for certainty to both parties in terms of current and future development process and entitlements, setting out density, intensity, land uses, and processes to be followed for development, clarifying how land development regulations will apply, anticipating and planning for continued future development, and establishing design standards and process requirements for development taking place under the ARD, Age-Restricted Development, future land use category, and zoning district.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion?
Okay, item five E, it's also a first reading, would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce, it has to be read by Tom Long.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, amending chapter 17, pensions and retirement, article four, police officers' retirement fund of the Code of Ordnances of the city of Leesburg, amending section eight disability, providing for codification, providing for separability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
No discussion on that, I'm also first reading, we conduct the business on five F and also five G. Item six is information reports, we have none. Item seven is the city attorney items.
Nothing tonight.
Item eight, the city manager items.
Nothing.
Oh, wow, okay. Item nine is public comments. This section is reserved for members of the public to bring up matters of concern or opportunities for praise. Issues brought up will not be discussed in detail at this meeting. Issue will either be referred to the proper staff or will be scheduled for consideration at a future city commission meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes, please. Any public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hello, good evening. My name is Amanda Borden-Kircher, I'm the minister at Corpus Christi Episcopal Church in Okeahumka. I, I attended the first, the early meetings with the discussion with the villagers, and I can see that we've decided together as a community that that's a good way for us to go. I just, I don't know if this is the right place to say it, I don't know, I just want to erric concern for that township, that distinctive Lake County community that is Okeahumka. The other day I drove up to the village of Feeny and saw what's happened to the community up there with the historic cemetery and the beautiful little houses, and I just have some concerns for the well-being of the people of Okeahumka, so that's, I don't know whether there's, what kind of involvement we could have as a community and how perhaps the villagers coming to this area might really benefit the people of Okeahumka in terms of providing a better quality of life for many of them. There's not really too many, it's very difficult to cross the road there, if you try to walk along the road, you could easily get hurt. There's certainly needs in that community too, so for recreation and a better quality of life for those people. So that's my concern, that it would just, Okeahumka will lose, at one time, I understand, I'm new to this area, relatively new, eight years, but I understand Okeahumka was bigger than Leesburg at one time.
On top of.
And was the name of a huge area, it's a huge historic significance to us, and I would hate to see it just disappear and be just a blip amongst, swallowed up by the villagers' development, as wonderful as that is. Because I certainly enjoy being the pastor of a church with all these retired people.
Right.
They have a lot to bring to our community. Those ladies spoke about the volunteer opportunities, I heartily agree with that, so just, I hope this is the appropriate place to place my concerns for that community.
I think Okeahumka would be considered a county of Lake County when.
Yeah, I believe they're unincorporated.
Is it not? Is it not part of the city of Leesburg then?
I don't think so.
So we, we, we have the effects of your decisions.
Right.
But no power to actually.
And, and I think it probably wouldn't get impacted until they start doing something with the road. As you go through Feeny, you see the roads being encroached on the houses, and I think there may be a state or a county issue once they start widening the road, and that may be a time then to discuss proper fencing, set bikes for the road, sidewalks and those things, but that really wouldn't be a Leesburg, that would be more of a state or a county issue with sidewalks and bike paths that Commissioner Bone talks about all the time with the walkability in, in communities. And I think that's where the Oklahoma community should maybe contact their county commissioner and says, hey, when you start doing road projects and you go to our, maybe our representative MPO can voice those concerns about, you know, sidewalks and bike paths to protect that neighborhood once the roads get expanded. Because that's what happened in, in, on 301, when the roads, I mean, I was, my wife rode through the other weekend, like, they're right up on the houses. Some of those small trailers are kind of like, you know, and State Farm is there, brand new, but the other, you know, the other houses kind of got encroached upon, so that may be something we can discuss at MPO, just to make sure.
You can contact my office, I'd be happy to sit down and talk with you.
I appreciate it, thank you for educating me about the role that different communities have and where they sit. I've never understood what unincorporated meant. So that's, they're, they're within the county, but they don't have representation. Do they have a mayor, they don't have a mayor then, or anything like that?
County commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for your offer of help too.
Contact my office and I'll sit down with you.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Any other public comment? Don, you got nothing to say tonight? Any other public comment? Okay, roll call please.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yeah, I just want to make comment about the last meeting, the boat ramp being approved, and I was concerned that it hadn't been sent back out for, for a new funding or a new price. And I just wanted, since it's already done and can't do anything about it, just want to make sure that going forward, that we don't automatically accept every bid that comes in, that we do go back and try to improve those bids. Granted, we're a city, but we shouldn't have to pay through the nose for all this stuff.
Right.
So please don't run away, you know, we don't need that freight train running away and spending more money than we actually have to.
I'm pretty sure we had that discussion at the last meeting, we did only have one bid, and we spent about six months with them renegotiating that number.
Okay. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bone?
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited about all the, the things that are, that we're doing here. I had a little thing today, I did a spelling bee over at Oak Park Elementary School, and you know, when you go and you sit in the, in the room with these, with these kids, and, and you get to see that their enthusiasm that they have about learning, and, and they were scared. I mispronounced a word, so the kid, the kid misspelled it, he got to go another round.
Oh, man, trick the kid.
I did bad. But, but man, what, what opportunities we, you know, we have in Leesburg, you know, with, you know, talking about the needs that we, that we have as a, as a community, and that we're addressing those, and you see the pieces as they come together, you know, the, the villages, what an opportunity that's gonna be for so many people with knowledge and experience to be so close to, to Leesburg, and I hope that they will, that they, they will offer their, their wealth and depth of knowledge and experience to our kids in town by volunteering and, and help our, our community to grow and be better. But that's great, and, and a, a couple things, you did mention the bike paths again, and I had asked Al, was looking at it a little bit for me, and, and I, and I had a little idea related to bike paths again, and this one is, also relates to people complaining about the speed, the track, the speed, like on Lone Oak particularly. And if, if we take our, if we look at our, a map and we figure out a way to designate some, some roads, like maybe Lone Oak, and I don't know if that's one, as a, as a shared road, Griffin possibly, particularly when it gets into Beverly Shores, and, and on those roads you go and you paint the, you have bicycle lane along the, along the road, so it's shared, and you have some bicycles painted. I don't know that it would be a, a huge expense to do it, of course it's an expense, but if that would even have some sort of a, an effect to slow down traffic possibly, that you've, that you've painted some lines on the road, not in white, but maybe green, or I think is typical, the color that they use for, for, for painting on roads for bicycles. But, but I, you know, it's a thought to, to maybe look at that a little, a little more, and then connect all these pieces, I'd like to, I've brought this up, I'd like to see us get connected to the resource center. I think it's less than a mile from the, the trail to there somehow. Another, another thought on the, as things are growing, and we've got a lot of positive things happening downtown, right now with new restaurants that are gonna be opening, and I, and I see other ones are coming as well, that are gonna be coming downtown, and, and I would imagine at some point we're gonna start talking about parking again, and, and so I, I brought this up to Al, and I actually brought it up to someone in the community, and they didn't like the idea, but I'm gonna bring it up here, because I like the idea. But if, if we took, if, if you look at, and this kind of relates to Taverys a little bit with what they've done with Alfred, and I'm not sure what the other street is, but they've got the one ways that kind of loop around. If, if we took Magnolia and Meadow back here, and you, and you made those like a one-way loop around the downtown area, and, and we, you could possibly add a lot of parking along, along that loop, essentially, and then you're, and then you're just a block away from Main Street around, you know, around downtown here. And that, that's a thought, I don't know whether it would add anything, I'm sure there's maybe some people along that loop that wouldn't like, are driving around that wouldn't like it, but it, but we're gonna have to look at parking at, at some point, and that's gonna either be built in a garage or doing something a little, little creative that might work. And then I think that's all, all I had tonight. My notes still.
Commissioner Hurley?
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yeah, I just want to say, it's nice to have our sidekick back, Elise, over there, and glad that she's doing better and able to be back in the meetings. We're really getting close to having to get some replacements there, you know?
You may still.
Yeah. And I will echo a lot of what's already been said. And I know, you know, we had our last meeting kicking off. But we, we really do have a, a lot of really good stuff that's going on. And, you know, get a lot of complaints about the traffic and construction on Dixie, but you can see what an impact it's going to make when it's actually done. That's going to be a game changer for that area, especially now with what we're doing at Vinicius Gardens. I think it's just going to really bring the whole thing in. And, and I think people are noticing. I mean, we have the new welcome sign coming in. As you come in, we're 21, 27, 441 split. That project is coming along really good. And then with what we're, what we're doing, and I, and I think one of the good things about it, and there's a lot said with the villages, but I think it's going to be more far-reaching for us, not just so much in, you know, additional revenue generated or things of that nature, quality of life, restaurants, shopping centers. But I think that, you know, with, with the villages coming in, what they've done with the other communities that I've witnessed, having them as partners now, they have a vested, a vested interest, in my opinion, in the city of Leesburg and the, the wealth and prosperity of our community. So I, I think with the experience and the knowledge that the villages has and proven success rate to be able to have them now as a partner with us. And, and I know Okeahumka was, was here and asking some questions. But I think that in the long run, we're going to find that it really lends to a lot of success for us in a lot of different ways. And some of the things that we talk about as far as, you know, becoming a recreation community, none of us have really ever accomplished that. But they have. I mean, you want to look at ostrich, buffalo, go to a concert, play golf. I mean, what do you want to do? And, and so I, I just keep looking at what our goals have been and some of our desires. And I think that being able to reach out to them as a partner and help us tie things together and really bring some of this is going to be really nice. And so I just, I'm glad things are going forward with that. And I look forward to a lot more. And speaking of things going really good, did I remind you guys that I'm running for Marty Grau King? And for all of you who are sitting out here and have been trying to figure out who to buy, your Marty Grau King support from, I need to see you right after this meeting. It's my last week to sell Marty Grau and raise money for the partnership who does an enormous amount of good things for our community. I'd love to sell you a reverse straw or a ball ticket or a donation or something. Because I want to win. So, thank you so much.
That may be one other thing. On the, on the 27, the entryway there, and I mentioned this to Al, about possibly some, some additional signage. I was talking with someone who's been looking at moving or at least locating a restaurant in Leesburg. And I mentioned the Lucy Ho's building to them there. And they said they had looked at it and their concern is navigation of the traffic there. And, and my discussion with Al and with him is, once you figure it out, it's easy to get, to get there to there in the Burger King. But if, if you don't know how to do it, you're lost and you're going to miss it. So he, he actually suggested that could, if we could look at, you know, getting a directional sign there, I guess on the northbound 27, where you have to make that U-turn to come, to come back.
Right.
And but not, but a directional sign that would list the, the restaurants that are there, the Burger King, the Lucy Ho's or whatever it is. So it, so it directs, so you, if you're there, you know to get in that left lane and follow that, that loop around. So I know, Al said that might be a DOT issue, but...
I've been talking with DC about that.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Christian?
Well, I echo, great things are happening in Leesburg. Happy to have you back. Even right there at the turn and the beautification of that horrible designed road there. I think we've come to and I did something that's going to make Leesburg proud. Happy to hear about the resource center and moving forward and, and the partners that we, that we have. The building is one thing, but you can get community partners that can come in and, and the city not have to hire a person to be there to run. I think it's fantastic. And I just want to report, I, I thought I was going to have a young lady here tonight. I want to report to the city council, the house that the CDC brought from, from the city for $5,000. We sold the one on Perkins Street a while ago. But today, we closed on the one on Sixth Street. Young lady was 21 years old. She's in the foster care system. First house she's ever bought. She lived with her grandmother, Lady Lake. And she was able to secure financing, so she moved in today. So I'll try to get her coming tonight, but she had to work because she was trying to get a promotion at Walgreens. So she, she couldn't be here tonight. So I want to get her, just to say thank you to the commission for believing in, in first-time homeownership. Instead of knocking the house down, you now have a house on the tax road and a new citizen that moved from Lady Lake to Leesburg. And she's ecstatic about her first home. So I just want to report to the commission that partnership works. And Wells Fargo also gave the CDC $5,000 to help with the renovation of the house. So we are actually able to get additional funding to help us renovate the house for. And the CDC was able to pay her closing costs. So that's what the CDC can do for a first-time home buyer, is make sure they can, dreams come true. So I just want to thank the city council for that donation. The CDC will give you a formal letter in the near future. That's our most adjourned?
Please do.
Do you want to say?